Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our public work session on February 8th, 2022. Ms. Burns, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Kovitz.
Present.
Mrs. Lafferty.
Here.
Mr. Parentana.
Present.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
Mr. Sporni.
Present.
Mr. Sullivan is absent with prior notice. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Here, sorry, I should have known this one. All right, the board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Burns, do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
announcements. Dr. McGee, superintendent, it's a report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. In board docs, the board will find the February enrollment report. Things are stable. Moving on to the second thing, if you're watching the weekly COVID reports, attendance continues to be good. It's back to pre-holiday levels and case counts are dropping dramatically. We're going to hold course for a bit longer and hopefully we can open some more things up shortly. And then the category of things that make me smile, the High School Musical, Something Rotten. Not only was it an outstanding performance, but on Friday night, there was pending weather. So I postponed the High School Musical to a Saturday matinee. There was no weather, just for those of you keeping score, for those of you keeping score. But on Saturday afternoon, after two-plus hours, two-and-a-half hours of the High School Musical, at the last act, the power went out at the Shamani High School. And as we all scurried from wherever we were at that time to send them help, the cast, the crew, the directors, Ms. Nichols, got together and they performed the final act under emergency lighting without music and did an outstanding job to raving reviews. So a story of resiliency, and then if you actually saw the performance, it was outstanding. So it was nice to see that. And as I move around the middle schools, as I said last meeting, they are also working on their performances. Finally, an academic piece. In two weeks, I will ask the board to waive the Keystone graduation requirements for the class of 2022, as we did last year for the class of 2021. In our opinion, in my opinion, it's not fair to hold them accountable to that. That is a local in the Shamani requirement. It's been in place for a number of years, and we've worked through that to make sure those who have difficulty passing them, we give them actual help and then they graduate. So given the pandemic, we probably should not hold them accountable to that, in our opinion, and I'll ask the board to waive that for this next class. That said, the class afterwards, the class of 2023, is no longer under a Shamani Keystone graduation requirement. They're under a state graduation requirement. So we will not be able to waive that under our own conditions. So we have a plan in place. Since Mr. Bowman has got here in July, he's been working on that with the high school staff. And we have a program in place and staff already in place. And Jay is going to spend a second to explain that to you and the community. It's already been through ed development. So, Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Good evening, everybody. As Dr. McGee said, starting with the class of 2023, our students will be required to comply with Act 158. So Act 158 is a statewide high school graduation requirement. It provides, basically, Act 158 provides alternatives to the state requirement of obtaining proficiency on all the Keystone exams. So as most of you know, currently, there are three Keystone exam students take either at the middle school level or the high school level, depending on the track they're in. They are Algebra I, Biology, and a literature exam. So if you take a look at the handout, which is the same as what you see up on the screen, Pathway 1 is the original pathway. Pathway 1, if you obtain proficiency on all three exams, you can graduate from high school. So that is a little less than 50% of our current 2023 class has achieved proficiency on the three tests. Pathway 2 allows for composite combined score from all three exams to be used. The problem there is in 2020, the state provided a proficient score for anybody that was in a Keystone-eligible course. The problem is they did not assign a numerical value to that proficiency. So anybody that would have taken a Keystone exam that year in 2020 cannot use Pathway Number 2. So it leaves us a few more pathways to get kids through. Pathway 3, if you look, that is a career technical education piece that does not apply to the Shamani High School, so we can't use Pathway 3. Pathway 4, we can use. It requires a passing grade on Keystone-aligned courses and a minimum score on a few different tests, such as PSAT, SAT, AP scores, and so forth. So several students, quite a few students, quite honestly, will probably not be able to get through that pathway. So we believe Pathway 5, the evidence-based pathway, is probably our best bet to get the vast majority of students that struggle on the Keystone exams through. So if you take a look at some of the things on there, there's an acceptance to an accredited other-than-four-year nonprofit institution of higher education, right? So if we get our students to apply and get accepted, Bucks County Community College, that checks off that box. And then in that last box bottom right, where it says "Choose 2," satisfactory completion of a service learning project, and we can use that more than once. So the service learning projects aren't a real high bar, a real high standard from the state. It's 10 hours of community service, something that we feel will be impactful or the community needs. So Pathway 5 is really what we're looking at. We feel like we have the resources and we have the staff to monitor students and get them through Pathway 5. We're still working on, the state is providing us a monitoring tool that has not yet been made available to districts, so we're waiting on that so we can start to get some data into that and monitor these students. In the very near future, we'll be providing this same information and a little more details and explanation to parents in regards to 158. Student Keystone scores are up in Home Access Center now, so parents and students can see what current Keystone scores are in Home Access Center. We will be meeting with students in groups and individually to discuss with them how they can meet Act 158 requirements. And I think most importantly, nobody out there should panic. We will, again, we have a plan and we believe we have the resources to help our students get through this. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. And to restate what Jay said, we continue to make sure students are prepared for these exams, and if they're not successful on them, we give them assistance along the way. But at the same time, I personally believe they should not stop somebody from graduating from high school, assuming they've passed the course. And we're going to do everything possible to make sure that no student does not correct, no student does not, you know what I'm talking about, because of the Keystone exam. So we will make sure that that has been, that that will happen. And within the next month, we're going to roll out that plan and communicate it to parents. So thank you. Mr. Allen, that's all we have.
Thank you. That brings us to our, excuse me, first round of public comment. Ms. Burns, our agenda items, please. Do we have any signups?
Yes, Matt Taylor.
Just be mindful of your three.
Matt Taylor, self-employed, Red Rose Gate. And I just want to first congratulate us all on getting through the seasonal COVID spike with masks optional and no contact tracing. I knew we could do it. So there are a few things I wanted to bring up tonight. First, I'd like an explanation as to why we're continuing to have students eat lunch in the classroom. My daughter's desk is pushed together with another student all day, but at lunchtime, she has to pull her desk away, and they all have to be quiet at a Level 1, and they get in, or they get in trouble. I'd like an explanation as to why that is, now that we're mask optional. The only thing I can gather from that is that we still think cloth masks are preventing COVID from spreading. I think even the mainstream media is now saying masks don't work, something we've all been saying all along. I think it's time to eliminate all useless mitigations like eating lunch in the classroom and start having lunch in the cafeteria again. Secondly, I feel it's past due for teachers and staff to have the option to not wear a mask. I think the language where it says unless within six feet should be removed from the health and safety plan. I think my daughter's education would be greatly improved if she could see her teacher's face as she's being taught how to read and spell. Lastly, in regards to the prom location, which doesn't affect my daughter, but it does affect a lot of other kids, having the prom in the city where there's a vaccination requirement to attend doesn't sound right to me. It has created an unintentional form of coercion. I don't think this board would have voted for a rule like that, and I understand that rule wasn't yours, but I think an alternate location should be explored or exemptions should be allowed that, so that kids are excluded, so that kids aren't excluded. According to CDC data, only 50% to 60% of 17- to 18-year-olds are fully vaccinated. I don't think it's the right thing to do to put about half the kids in a situation where they either get a vaccine they don't want or miss out on their prom. They've lost out on enough of their high school experience, and I think the location needs to be changed or exemptions need to be made so that all kids can attend. I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Alex York.
Good evening, Alex York. I'm a claims manager, live in Forsythia Gate. I am the parent of a senior, sophomore, and two in middle school. I am speaking to you tonight because of the senior prom. I think after the holidays, it's all been on our minds, so I'm sure the conversation has really come up. So yes, the same thing as Matt said, our concern is having the venue where the venue is and the mandate for the vaccinations of having it in Philadelphia. I know from what we've heard that there are discussions of trying to find an alternate venue for it, if we're able to. But I just wanted to come out to voice a lot of concerns that I know that many of the parents of us with non-vaccinated kids have, that, you know, they want to be part of it, they want to go with their friends. This has been a great year that we've been moving forward, and I think, you know, we really just want to see that the whole school comes together and continues to move forward towards the end of the year in a more positive way, together and not separate, and trying to come up with a solution. On one note, I know that many of us parents are at the point now where we have daughters looking at $600, $700, $800 dresses that we don't want to invest in if they're not going to be able to get into a prom. I'm just, just to be a little levity to it, but it is a serious issue. There's a lot of anxiety. I think what we're just looking for, we're just hearing a lot of rumors here, a lot of rumors there of who said this and who said what, of what's going on and, you know, what's been being discussed about it. And we're just looking to see if we can get some clarity as to if there's a plan in place or alternate plans, you know, being talked about. I also have a sophomore, so I just asked the board, consider this too in the future. I know that this venue has been booked a couple of years ago, but looking forward to the next few years as well, that perhaps it's not in a city that mandates these sort of things. And there's also a safety concern with having the kids going into the city with everything going on right now. Every day you watch the news, and we know why, that we have that concern. So that's all I wanted to come up with you today. Thank you.
Joshua Thomas.
Just wanted to first say thank you for your guys' hard work. Really appreciate it. It's been pretty intense with everything going on. Just two things, just similar, is if it be possible to make masks optional for teachers, that would be fantastic. I actually have noticed, my daughter's in first grade, she's made some improvements with her mask off, which is fantastic. It's, I'm very loving that. And the other thing, too, for the senior prom, I know I've had different seniors I've talked to that they're concerned for if they, be possible to change the venue, if that be possible. Thank you.
Brandy Miles.
I also wanted to voice my concern for the prom and for the issues in that regard.
You state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Brandy Miles. I'm a resident in Langhorne. I'm the parent of three students, one of whom is a senior. So the issue of vaccinations has the potential to divide the Shamani community, and that's not something that we want to see happen. But in fact, it already has in some ways. As we all know, too, the pride of Shamani, the select choir was able to go and perform at the Kimmel Center, but several of the students were unable to go with their peers because of vaccination status. And there's nothing we could do about that, but the response of some of their other choir members was disappointing. It was overheard to have very derogatory comments, basically saying they're stupid for not getting the vaccine, and yay, now you get a solo, and unkind things like that, very, very uncompassionate and self-centered. I don't want to see that kind of thing happen with the prom. We should be a united group of people. We are Shamani, we should be Shamani proud. We shouldn't be vaccinated or unvaccinated. That shouldn't be a litmus test on anything, like going to the prom or anything else. When we hear about somebody getting sick, the first question shouldn't be, were they vaccinated? To add fuel to whatever side of the argument you're on, our first question should be, are you, are they going to be okay? How's their family? What do they need? Like, should we, you know, bring a meal over to help them out? We should be caring about people, not caring only about vaccination status. So my exhortation to you is to do whatever you can to eliminate the potential for this to be a divisive thing in our community. We want to be compassionate people, and we want to be a community that's united and strong, and Shamani proud. Thank you.
James Flynn.
Yeah, James Flynn, I live on Aspen Avenue, and I've seen quite a few of you last night. The reason I'm here is I wanted, I don't know if the board is aware, that there's a Dunkin' Donuts at the corner of, that would be Maple Avenue and Old Lincoln Highway. I'm a former driver for the district, and they've granted approval for them to put a drive-through there, and nobody's, almost nobody's known about it. But I have like over 150 signatures from my neighbors and surrounding people that want to put a stop to it. But I'm also still friends with a lot of drivers that come through there. And if you're familiar with, you know, Trenton Road, Pendell and stuff, the traffic jams that this stuff, this causes, I'm just wondering if yous could do anything like to lean on the township to put an end to this. I mean, because it's going to affect my neighborhood, because I live right by there, but it's also going to cause unwanted, you know, you're going to have late school buses, and you really don't need this, you know, at this time right now. And can I ask anybody here, has anybody heard of this situation there? Because it was, it was never, ever, it wasn't very transparent as far as I, you know, I was concerned. It's, they want to, they want to put a drive-through on that Dunkin' Donuts, and then they want to put a housing development back there, which I don't have a problem with the housing development, but the drive-throughs and, you know, they're just nothing but a traffic jam, you know? And it's a major intersection up there, so you're going to have nothing but... And my other problem is that, you know, we have buses cutting through. I'm sure you've heard about the complaints about going up Warthorn and stuff like, you know, through the streets around the back of my neighborhood. And that's just going to increase if this thing gets through. Okay, thank you.
After we get through some housekeeping, we come back to another, a second round of public comment, and then we'll have board comment and superintendent to address some of your, trying to answer you.
That's all that I had signed up, but I think there was a couple more.
Kim Gorman, Red Rose Gate. So I'm really just going to echo what everybody else has said, as far as lunches, that was the other thing. So I have middle schoolers. High school seems to be pretty normal at lunch, but my, the middle school's still not, so they're still sitting in desks three feet apart, they're not allowed to talk. That would be great if we could finally get back to actual complete normal. The teachers in the masks, that's the other thing. You know, the other, most of the other districts that are optional, everybody's optional, sorry, staff included, like, we shouldn't be excluding them. It's the same, same virus, same mask, like, why everybody should be, be included in that. And the prom, again. So I don't have a senior, but I, I'm getting messages from a lot of parents with seniors. I do have a daughter, and I know when she's a senior, we're going to be spending, I'm not spending $500, I'm telling you that now. But, I know, I know, I know. I'm saving now to spend that. But, you know, it's something they planned for a long time. We can't just wait and see what happens. So we all knew, or at least I knew from the get-go, that this, the mask was going to lead into the vaccine, and it's exactly what it's doing. So if we keep supporting these venues that are actually doing that, then we're just going along with it. I know there are talk, there's a lot of talk of kids making vaccine cards. So what are we teaching our kids? They have to lie in order to go to their prom. And I don't blame them, because I would do it if that's what I had to do, because I'm not going to get vaccinated. I also have heard kids' parents telling me their kid now wants to get vaccinated for the prom. Like, that's not okay. I know it's a difficult thing to find a venue. Maybe we could split it into two nights, not vaccinated versus unvaccinated, but what if we did something along those lines, and maybe they could pick two different nights, and you would be able to have a lot more flexibility that way? I think everybody could still go with the friends they want to go with. Not everybody knows everybody, so I don't know if that's an option. But I really think, one, we shouldn't support it, if that's how they're going to be. We need something from them that says they're going to let them in with exemptions or something. But I agree with everybody, we're just segregating more and more and more every day, and I don't think that's where we want to go. That's it.
Thank you. Well, closed public comment. That brings us to, I'd rather number two on the agenda items for approval at the upcoming public meeting. I'll read through them. There are nine items. 2.01, routine business matters. There's 2.02, maybe student settlement agreement. 2.03, out-of-district placements. 2.04, we have a number of overnight trips. 2.05, there'll be a first reading of Policy 903, 626 and Series 200. 2.06 is the wave of the Keystone exam proficiency as graduation requirement for the class of 2022. 2.07, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22, 2022 to '23 Program and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Services Budget. 2.08, we will take up installation of module classrooms at Poquesting. And the final item, 2.09, the approval of the 2022-2023 Student School Year Calendar. Open that up. Any of those items for discussion of the board? Seeing none, that brings us to our committee reports. 3.01, Ms. Hollenbeck, Business Operations, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Business Operations Committee last met January 27, 6:30 in this room. It was all about the budget. The budget is on display on our website, if anybody would like to look at it. For those of you not in attendance, which I don't think, maybe one or two are, you really missed a barn burner. That's where everything gets done and talked about, and what we're going to do next year. So the Business Operations Committee is where there's more open dialogue, well, all of the committees, is where there's more open dialogue than anything. So if there's anything that you feel strongly about, find a committee that it belongs to and go to those committee meetings. You'll get much more one-on-one dialogue than us up here, not always being able to answer you. So like I said, the last meeting was the 27th, and the next one is not scheduled until March 30th, 6:30 in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. Excuse me, Ms. Bowman, Educational Development Report, please.
The Educational Development Committee will meet next Tuesday, February 15th, to discuss curriculum and instruction goals and updates, and also the 2022 summer programs. So hopefully we have some people come out next Tuesday. Thanks.
Thank you. Facilities and Planning is Mr. Sullivan, as he is absent. I am going to ask Mr. Parentana to give us that report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Our next Facilities and Planning, excuse me, Facilities and Planning Committee meeting will be held February 16th, 6:30 PM, but it will be at the High School Library is where we're going to have the committee meeting. Before COVID hit, the Facilities Committee made it a habit to try and visit all our schools and have those meetings on site, so we can be abreast of what's going on in each of our facilities. We're going to try to start normalizing that again. I don't know if we're going to get to a strict schedule, but we recently completed a renovation project at the, at the High School Library, and I haven't had an opportunity to see it yet, and I know Mr. Cirillo had seen it during back-to-school night, and we'd like to check out all, all what they did there. So I hope to see you there. We'll be discussing, of course, our new proposed Maple Point Elementary School, also the High School Fields Project. We're going to have a, are we rediscussing the stadium bleachers again? No? We did that last meeting, right? Yeah, we did that last meeting. And we're moving towards the bid process on, on both those projects. Very happy to report that last night, in front of the Middletown Supervisors, Shamani had an opportunity to present its final land development plan for the Maple Point site. It lasted about an hour, and we were glad that we received a 5-0 vote supporting the project. I want to thank the Middletown Supervisors for working with us on this, as with our previous projects like Towanka, you know, it's really important to partner up with the municipal... with the municipality where you're doing such a major project is. And Middletown has worked with us hand in hand to help us not only get the project off to a good start, but helping us address some of the financials concerns. When municipalities do large projects with the school district, they try to offer us permit relief where we just pay cost for those permits and it helps reduce the price of the project because the permit fees can be hundreds of thousands of dollars. And since it's one taxpaying base paying to another taxpaying base, I don't think anybody thinks that's a good idea that taxpayers should be paying other taxpayers fees. We've done this previously with Lower Southampton and Middletown has agreed to work with us on that. We were represented by Mr. Torrente, our board solicitor, Dr. McGee, Mr. Bowman. In attendance was Gilmore, our site contractors and Spiesel Architecture Group who all presented the plan. And if you want to see it, Middletown does have a YouTube channel. You can spend, I don't know, was that an hour, hour and a half meeting? Two-hour meeting almost on the project and went into a lot of details. And Mr. Allen, our president, was there as well as I, who helped, both of us answered some questions from the board. And we're looking forward to moving to the next stage, which will be development bids for the project. So I think that wraps everybody up. I hope to see you, if anybody's interested in what we're doing facilities on February 16 at the high school library at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perutano. Brings us to 3.04, our Policy Committee. Mr. Cirillo.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Our next Policy Committee meeting is Tuesday, March 15. We will be reviewing Policy Series 300 employees. All are welcome. Hopefully we'll get more turnout than normal. Thank you.
Great. Right back to you, our representative reports. Mr. Cirillo, the IU Board, please.
Actually, I have nothing new to report this, this month. IU is still operational with all of the health and safety precautions and they're still delivering the quality of education and services that are required by them.
That brings us to our Neshamani Education Foundation.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one, one, Ms. Lafferty may be aware of something. I may have made a mistake. I had seen another schedule that showed we would be at the high school. The form she just showed me says that wouldn't be until March. I thought we were going to be in the high school venue in February. That's okay, so it's possible that this, this printout on the backside of the agenda might be incorrect. So February 16, we will be at the high school for Facilities and Planning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Again, 4.02, Neshamani Education Foundation. Mr. Kovitz, please.
The Board of the Neshamani Education Foundation met yesterday here at Maple Point. Among the items discussed was the foundation's acceptance into the Pennsylvania Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program, which gives local businesses tax benefits for donating money to the NEF for specific projects benefiting the district. The deadline for businesses to apply is in May. More information on how to participate will be shared with the community shortly. Also, the Harlem Wizards will be returning to Neshamani on Saturday, March 26. Tickets for this family-friendly, high-energy fundraising spectacle will be on sale later this week at www.neshamani.org/wizards. Local businesses are also invited to purchase a game sponsor program ad with a donation to the NEF at the same website. The, in addition, I did want to mention another thing that came up. For those who may remember, Rick Echols, he was a former board member and he was the president, I believe, as well, a board president for a time. Mr. Echols unfortunately passed away not too long ago and, and so the NEF has set up a memorial page on their site. According to what was mentioned yesterday, the family said NEF was their, their charity of choice. So, so they, they set up a memorial page and kindly, if you're going to give, please give at that page on the NEF website. The next meeting will be held on Monday, March 14, here at Maple Point at 4:00 p.m. All are welcome to attend and participate. That's all I got for now.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. PSBA liaison, Mr. Perutano.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. As some of you may know, the PSBA supports local school districts through an ambassador program. For the last year, our ambassador, and I don't want to butcher his name here, but it's a long one, is, I believe, Thomas Selzinger, I believe is his name. He is retiring from that post. You may have all received an email saying that he'll be leaving that post and a new person will be appointed for our district. Not, when I say district, I don't mean just Neshamani. I believe there are six or seven ambassadors that cover the entire state and it's the PSBA districts that, that support us. So I can just say Tom has been very good at reaching out and letting us know what's going on. I've had some conversations with him over his tenure and it's, it's, his dedication to the school boards was much appreciated and I wish him well in whatever he's moving on to. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings me to 4.04, Technical School, which is me. The Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board Committee met on Monday, January 24, 2022. A couple items brought to our attention by the student representatives. Linda Pringle and Ryan Gallagher, senior class president and vice president. For Neshamani, 10th grade Claude Adams was chosen one of the December Students of the Month. So we congratulate him. Bucks County Technical High School hosted several Skills USA District 2 competitions on January 20. Competitions were held in power equipment technology, diesel technology, cabinet making, industrial motor control, CNC technician, precision machining, mechatronics and web design. Students from surrounding District 2 schools attended to compete in these competitions. Area industry professionals were on hand to judge these competitions. Students winning first place at the district level will move on to the state competition in April. It's quite an event over there and we're so glad we can have it again. Bit of housekeeping that we did. Normal check registers and movement, but I did want to mention that the board did approve the SWOAR program. Summer opportunities are real. That's our special students that, you know, they, they work in the cafeteria and do some of the millwork. I mean, they, they work in some of the shops. Weren't able to hold that last year. So again, moving on back to normal, that tech school, I'm so glad they're going to be able to hold that program this summer. Important, we, the financial services directors and business managers, there was some disagreement on our Articles of Agreement, but there was a meeting of the minds and they came to resolution that was equitable to all the districts, sending districts. And we have the change, the agreement, the board, tech board approved our Articles of Agreement and we are living on that.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We approved the 2022-2023 Bucks County Technical High School Course Selection booklet. That is, that is about it and I, thank you. This is awkward movement now because I have to get back on to our schedule. Yes, that brings us to our second round of public comment. Be mindful of our three-minute limit.
Good evening. Jennifer Brown, Georgetown Development. I just have a quick few questions in regards to eighth grade. Is there going to be normal graduations or is it going to be Zooming in? And are they going to do trips or dances or anything like that? I just was kind of curious about that and what you guys stand with that. That's all I have right now, so thank you.
Thank you. No one's seen, no one moving to the podium. All right, I will close our second round of public comment. Surprise, do we have any future topics? Because no.
Not for me.
For me? Anyone? No? All right, that brings us to Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. To address some of the public comment here, and I've done what Mr. Allen did, just lost my page. I'll start with the last from Ms. Brown. The end of the year should be normal. As far as, I don't know that there are any eighth grade dances, but if there were, we could have them. Trips probably didn't get scheduled because no one knew the future. So if they're not scheduled, they're not going to be scheduled. It's one of those things that has to be done well in advance. So there's no, there's no moratorium on those type of things. But if they haven't happened and been put in place and scheduled, they probably are not going to happen. But there are no rules on that. As far as changes in the mitigation of the COVID mitigation Health and Safety Plan, I would think that hopefully if you're watching the weekly report, we seem to be continuing to cut numbers in half. If we can do that again on Friday and the next Friday, I think we'll be in good shape in March to propose some opening up of things. As far as students in the, in the, in the lunchroom, that's probably one of the first moves we're going to make. It's a matter of, one, picking the time to do it, to move a lot of furniture around and making sure all are comfortable with it. So I think that's going to. I did hear some comments about students not being allowed to talk during lunch. That is not the plan. So I've spent a lot of time in lunchrooms and middle school lunch is anything but quiet and so is elementary lunch, to be honest with you. So if you, if you honestly are, if there's a no-talk rule, send me an email. I'll see if I can find the no-talk rule and I will end it. So that is not the plan. Lunch should be an enjoyable time. Lunch should be an enjoyable time. Comments about staff masks, I understand. My barometer on that, I'll be honest, is watching what students are doing and watching what their parents are asking them to do. So if you're watching the report, the majority of our K through eight children seem to continue to mask. It seems to be a preference of somebody, whether it be the students or the parents. So that's where I am watching that. That's dropping a bit, slightly. At the high school, I believe it's below 50% on my last report. So that is my personal gauge, gauge on that as well. Staff's not required to wear masks unless they're in proximity of others. So that's, that's the procedure there. So that's, that's my thinking on things as far as COVID-related. Let's hope we continue. And if you recall, last spring, somewhere within a month, we dropped to single digits and almost zero. So let's hope that happens. As far as things on the docket, we have, winter sports are going. Gym night is scheduled the first week of March and that is a large indoor event. That's followed by the ninth and 10th grade formal in gym three and then the junior prom somewhere thereafter. And then we get to the senior prom on May, second week of May. So this is where we are on the senior prom. I don't think there's anyone, whether it be the students, myself, the high school administration, that wants to exclude anyone from the prom. So that is our plan. Presently, or the prom is a student-driven event. So they, the elected class officers for the class and sometimes student council, they begin in their ninth grade going to other proms, learning what the venue's like and looking at it and deciding whether that's where they want their venue. So this particular group of students, they keep being called the Prom Committee. I've never heard that in a while. But they have selected this particular venue a long time ago and then the rules changed and we have what's in front of us. So some of the selection process to fill everybody in. We're not like many other high schools in the area. We are, I believe, the 14th, 15th or 16th largest high school in the Commonwealth. That means we come with more kids. So some of our challenges for prom are finding someone that can serve that many children. And the junior prom's four to 600, depends on the year. The senior prom, six to 800, they're, they're, they're allowed to bring guests. So it's a function of service and that's making sure that we can feed them. It's a function of the dance floor. Even if you can seat that many kids, you can't give them this space to dance in because all of them dance, every single one of them. So we try not to watch for those there. And then the idea of supervision, our job to be able to watch them in that particular venue, venue in that size. And believe it or not, restroom facilities. So some of our converted arenas that are now venues didn't convert their restroom facilities. So that, that presents some challenges. That being said, over the course of, I spent some time as high school principal. We've investigated a lot and usually we end up with large hotel and conference centers, which are designed for large groups to feed people, have built-in facilities, restroom facilities, have in-house security and really big dance floors. So that's where, that's how we got where, where, where we are. And there might be two places that we go back and forth between that have been satisfied with. The junior prom is at a place locally and we barely fit in there with the junior prom. So some of the options are, and we haven't taken anything off the plate yet. And I understand why people are concerned about it and the students are concerned about. Any type of move, one, we have to resolve all those issues and find a facility that can handle us, both service-wise, dance-wise, supervision-wise, safety-wise and restroom-wise. Probably involves a date, a date change. And I can almost guarantee it'd be multiple rooms if a facility can handle us. So that's out there. That said, Mr. Staub and the high school are working with our present venue. It is the Sheraton Corporation. And they, they plan on getting us in, all of us. They don't know how they're going to do it, to be honest with you. Their, their business is not bringing proms in. Their business is selling hotel rooms and having conferences that sell meals and, and drinks, et cetera. So we're on their docket. We've been with them for a while. So they haven't had a prom yet. They've had a lot of things that involve adults. So we do know that, at least preliminarily, and we're asking them for information sooner than later, that students won't be excluded. The rule in Philadelphia has to do with eating. So if you're unvaccinated, you're not allowed to eat inside. So they're, they're splitting hairs there. They're trying to come up with a plan. I pushed them, I pushed, asked them to put us on our priority list so we can make a decision as to what that looks like for them and how that all works. So I think we're making progress there. And if the prom cannot be somewhere where a significant number of students can't attend for a particular reason, we will, we will, we will move it. But that has to be done sooner than later. And unfortunately, I think there's a mass that wants to continue and there's a group that mass that doesn't want to. We have to sort that out and we're hoping we can sort it out where, where we are and make it work. But I don't have answers from the venue yet and I'm hoping to get them. So that's where we are with prom. At any point, if the board were to decide to go one particular direction or the other, that's, that's fine. I asked, give us more time to sort out the present venue to see if we can make it work, give them time to figure out what they're going to do with our six to 800 kids when they show up and how they're going to meet their requirements by the city of Philadelphia. I asked them frankly today, if you don't want us to come, let us know. They said, we want you to come. So I said, well, you got to give me some details on how it's going to work. So that's, that's there. There's no malicious intent on anyone, the students, the administration at the high school. It's just, it's just where we are and it's three months away. So a lot of things can happen in three, in three months. So that's, that's an honest report of what I know about the prom. All right? Probably know too much about the prom. Mr. Allen, that's all for me.
All right, thank you. That brings us to board comment. Go around the table. We'll start with Ms. Lafferty.
I support Dr. McGee's position on the prom right now and I think he is looking to make a change if he has to because I think we're all probably in agreement that we don't want to exclude any children. So I'm supportive of that and I do look forward to potential changes to the Health and Safety Plan for the younger kids and their eating venue, if we're talking venues. So that's it. Thank you.
Does anyone remember their prom meal? Yeah, 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 yeah. The prom meal just kills time. That's what it does. Yeah, 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 yeah. The prom meal just kills time. That's what it does. No, no, not too much time. The meal can be longer.
I echo Ms. Lafferty's comments. You know, this district, we've done our best to be out front when it's come to the COVID mitigation. I know there's a lot of people that weren't happy with the things we did, but we were one of the districts that brought kids back first. We were one of the districts that tried to lessen our our mitigation strategies to reasonable strategies. We were one of the few districts that tried to have a 2020 graduation in June, which unfortunately, we run successful, but we did pull an in-person one off in August. And I have no doubt that that soon as Dr. McGee and his staff feel it's comfortable enough to present the board with a revised plan, to this date, the board is not forced on Dr. McGee and his staff conditions that we didn't think they could meet while delivering the education that we need to deliver to these kids. I feel it's been pretty successful so far. And as we're reaching what we all hope is the endgame, because I truly believe we are now past the pandemic stage and into the endemic stage of what this disease is, we will, again, be one of the first districts to, you know, get back to as much normalcy as possible. And I'm hoping that the Sheridan regardless of being in Philadelphia, and just personally, my own business is in Philadelphia, so I know it's like to deal with Philadelphia. I personally hate to take it out on, well, not that I would hate to take it out on the Sheridan Corporation, but but I hate the rules that are in place that are taking it out on the mom and pops that are that are trying to survive in Philadelphia. It's a real tragedy. I know so many of them that have left closed shop. And we will do our best to make sure that every child has that experience that we all looked forward to when we were in school. So thank you all for coming out, sharing your comments. We are listening, and I believe you should have the confidence that we have in the people that are running this place to to put the kids first, and I think that's what's going to happen. So thank you.
Hasn't said anything tonight, so we're good. All right, Mr. Sporni.
No real comment of content, but just to thank everyone for taking the time to come out and join us. It's a it's a group effort. We're all volunteers, and everyone's a stakeholder. So I respect people taking their time and advocating for what, you know, they believe. So everyone get safely.
I want to go with something completely unrelated, and yet near and dear to my heart, and that is March 29th. This district is bringing back, talking about getting back to normal, something, one of the events that I personally look forward to every year. That is the Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics Expo. Being a STEAM person myself, it is, for those people who have young kids, or kids that happen to be, show interest in anything STEAM-related, it is a wonderful event, and I look forward to seeing everyone there because I plan to be there myself. So thank you.
Do you have a date on that?
March 29th.
March 29th.
Sorry. Yep.
Mr. Spelman.
I just wanted to thank Doc McGee for dealing with the Sheridan. I really hope we can work that out. My phone's blowing up from all the teenagers. We already have our gown purchased, and so hopefully, they can work that out. I know the numbers are coming down in Philadelphia. So best-case scenario, hopefully, they lift this mandate. Talking about the teacher masks, I believe that's a state mandate? It's not? Okay. Yeah, all right. So hopefully, yeah.
That was yours.
Hopefully, we can make that optional in the near future. I can tell you by experience, it's very difficult to teach small children phonics when they cannot see your face. I'm going through that now. But, all right, and that's it. Cross your fingers on prom. And just to remember, for gym night, the peanut butter and jelly challenge, if you're blue, please bring a container of
Peanut butter.
Peanut butter. If you're red, please bring a jar of jelly. They are collecting those items. They always do a competition like this every year. I think one year it was like baby food, and it is to supply local food banks. So that, and it is a competition. Go blue. So Peanut Butter and Jelly Challenge, don't forget to donate your peanut butter and jelly. Thanks. Everybody, have a good night.
Plastic jars of jelly, please.
Peanut butter. Peanut butter.
I defer the rest of my time to the president and vice president. Thank you.
This is all.
I really have no comments tonight. Everybody's already eloquently said what they're feeling about all of that. We are working on all of it. Health and safety plan, prom, everything. So have a good night. And yes, go blue.
Yes. Thank you all for coming out tonight for a work session. The Duncan Dunnitts intersection that you brought up, that's Maple Avenue and Old Lincoln Highway. The drive-through, yeah. I'm not sure what, anything we can do, we can investigate.
It depends what is going on at the township. If it's zoning relief, it's a variance. I mean, the district to be involved in a case like that, they would have to have standing, which would mean you'd have to be within a certain distance from the actual location. So it's, it's, it kind of depends.
It doesn't fall into the same category that we had with the the Wawa in Tewanka, where we had a facility within that proximity. So we were able to adjoin that. I don't even think if we had a bus stop there with that, that wouldn't allow us standing.
You'd have to own property within that distance. And that, just just for zoning. Now, that doesn't say, you know, people from the public can't go if it's a land development application, which it kind of seems like it is, to make public comment with respect to the application.
Right. Okay. But the district, we would be hard-pressed to find a
Other than to be worried about the traffic.
Yeah.
Could, could do. I don't, we wouldn't have standing.
Yeah. I went through that when I was involved in the Wawa issue with Tewanka, and it has to deal with how many feet you are from either a, our crossing lights and the actual school facility. And I don't think we're anywhere near, unfortunately, the Wawa. So I don't think we would be able to get involved in that. That was just my experience.
We could talk about it more at the facilities meeting.
Yeah.
By the way, Mr. Flynn, we're still hiring drivers. So if you've changed your mind.
All right. Well, I thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. And as to the prom, I know I've gotten a number of requests to look into it. I believe Dr. McGee has addressed those issues, and and I hope, you know, we are looking into it, and we'll continue to look into it. Our health and safety plan, by design, is very fluid, and as numbers come down, we will, you know, our intention is, of course, to normalize as soon as possible. And we will believe us, those of us on the board are watching it very carefully. The sooner we can move into an endemic all around will make all of us much happier. The, I wanted a shout-out to the Drama Club for their unfortunate loss of power. And as we were all made aware of it, of course, most of us said, well, the show must go on. And I think, you know, what we heard and what I saw, they did a heck of a job riding through that. And if I understand it correctly, there was a wrestling match also. And of course, as their wrestlers, didn't bother them one bit.
I don't even think they noticed.
Didn't even notice it. The STEM Expo at March 29th, thank you, Mr. Kovitz. I was not aware that was coming up. I know we had to postpone it last year, or was postponed, we canceled it. That is also, I just, you know, as a mechanical-oriented person, that is one of my favorite events as well. Right next to the gym night, go blue. And with that, I will just point out, our next meeting is February, yeah, February 22nd, 7:00 p.m. in this room. May I have a motion to dismiss?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of here.